Good evening, San Bernardino. Glad you guys could drop in. So tonight, we are going to cover the city council. AKA special meeting agenda, so let me make sure that we are all up and running. And everybody has access, so there's a lot, it's. Um, we'll talk about that like two seconds, so let me double triple check and. Wow, okay, here we go. Okay. So as we have discussed before, they took the regular meeting of December sixth tomorrow. And they turned it into a special meeting. As I had told you guys before, I wrote um a challenge to this um with the city council. And um and the city attorney ended up writing me back. And she said that there is no requirement for. A special meeting not to be a general meeting, that this happens on occasion. And um there it doesn't disenfranchise any of the residents, no. I responded back that. That I absolutely disagree. If general meetings were interchangeable with special meetings, there wouldn't be any different, you wouldn't. Have a different category, you they would have different designations if they can literally be the same thing. Our general meetings are supposed to have a specific time and date set by ordinance resolution, which is what we have. Our council has to vote on changing the times and dates of our council meetings. And they didn't, what they did, and here's again always my issue with BB and K. Is they figured out a way around the law. They figured a way to skirt. The law so that they could do what they wanted to do and keep the community out because as you guys know. And here's and I I I had a great um uh moment with a a resident today who said, I always. Believe the council meetings are at seven o'clock on the first and third Wednesdays of every month. And I don't chase the city agenda to see if that's any different and that's true because why would you assume? That the regular meeting would become a special meeting and moved up two hours, so I totally get that and. I I think this is just another ploy by the mayor and select council members. Um to make sure that the public's eyes weren't on certain agendas uh items, so I we're gonna look at that. Alright, let's get into this then because we have quite a bit to cover. So here we go and I am going to make sure that we zoom in this time, so you guys can see everything. So again, tomorrow at s- at five PM, they're going to begin special meeting session one. And then at six PM, special meeting session two. After that closed session will immediately follow session two. Councilman Reynoso will be participating remotely from the Holiday Inn Express and Suites in Baltimore. Um. If that's, you know, where he's gonna be, they have to post that, by the way, and also you guys were asking, so, okay. If you wanna li- do comments, you can, so let's let's talk about this, so at five o'clock, they're going to do a special meeting. And you in this meeting, you can talk about, even though I think this is posted incorrectly. Oh no, it's it's it was fixed, okay, you can comment on items one and two. So they are going to to talk about a regional partnership for animal services. And then they're going to talk about approval approved motel voucher program and authorize professional service agreements. So these are only two items for the first meeting at five o'clock, so if you want to come to this special meeting. You can only speak on these two items and let's talk about this because these are some, again, these are huge hot topics. Uh, the first is a regional partnership for animal services. It is recommended that the mayor and council of San Bernardino authorize the city manager to finalize and execute participation agreements. With the cities of Colton, Fontana, and Rialto to house animals at the shelter located at three 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 Chandler Place in San Bernardino. And provide staff direction on proposed staffing and site improvements needed to accommodate additional partner cities. And adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to take steps necessary. To establish establish a California nonprofit public benefit corporation named the Friends of San Bernardino Animal Services Foundation. Okay. Here's a couple things. I do not support this and you guys know I'm a huge supporter of our shelter and keeping it in the city. But what we do know is that over the last five years, after fighting to keep our shelter in the city. We asked for improvements to be made for expansions, either for it to be moved or reinvested into. Because it currently couldn't take care of our capacity of animals within our city. What now we have is three additional cities because remember, we used to have um an agreement with the city of Loma Linda. For animal services. What we have now are three additional cities who I believe had originally contracted with the county of Riverside, asking to come over here. I I've I don't understand how we're going to do that. I and so what I, as people have asked, well, what I do, I would not authorize. An execution of this participation agreement. What I would first do is number two, provide staff direction on proposed staffing and site improvements needed to accommodate additional. Partner cities, if this is something that we are going to consider, we need to do the analysis first because once you execute participation agreements. That means that we're on the hook for these animals. And we have what like four or five animal service people right now are we're past capacity where animals are being put down daily. I don't understand that. And then the other things about the city manager taking steps to establish a nonprofit. The city sh- is it should not be in the business of creating nonprofit organizations. If there are additional outside. In five oh one C threes who would like to partner with us, I think that would be the best course of action. As far as the city running a nonprofit, I remember when they were trying to take donations previously. It's utterly ridiculous, so number one absolutely disturbs me for the simple fact that. We don't have the capacity, we don't have the proper analysis. And this is the last thing the city should be trying to take on in addition to everything else we need to address. Just last year, the shelter had come out and done a huge presentation of what they would like the shelter to look like in like twenty. I think thirty, where are we with that, so? I hope the council says no, but like I said, it's it's not as much important as what I think. I would do next year, it's really important on what you guys are out here reaching out to the council to do tomorrow, so. That's coming up at five o'clock. And then approve the motel voucher program and authorize professional service agreements with local motel operators to provide interim shelter. It's recommended that the mayor and city council of San Bernardino. Review and approve the motel voucher program as presented or provide staff with modifications. Approve the following professional service agreements with the motel operators for the provision of motel rooms for homeless residents. Needing temporary shelter from a term beginning tomorrow, December sixth, for a year till twenty twenty four. Century RSVP LLC to provide a minimum minimum of twenty four rooms at the motel San Bernardino located. In San Bernardino for not to exceed six hundred and four thousand dollars. Six hundred and four thousand eight hundred dollars. Shiva SMT Incorporated to provide a minimum of twenty rooms up to a maximum of sixty rooms at the Mayfair Inn located in Ontario. For a total not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. Swami Shuri Investment Incorp to provide a minimum of fifteen rooms. Up to a maximum of eighty rooms at a Super Eight Motel located in Redlands for a total not to exceed six hundred and four thousand dollars. SB Express One LLC to provide a minimum of twenty eight rooms up to seventy five rooms. At the Super Eight Motel located in San Bernardino, not to exceed a million dollars. Um. This is. This is crazy. First and foremost, this is um extremely problematic. And. I. This is a lot of money leaving our city. So we're talking one point three million dollars in total um of our money. Going one to Ontario and one to Redlands. I. I can't even fathom that and look, and here's the truly honest portion of this, remember? And and I appreciate, I wanna first say this, let me give you my caveat. I very much always appreciated Councilman Ben Reynoso for giving me the accolades of being the one who pushed for. The city to declare a state of emergency for um for homelessness, one hundred percent, it had always been what I asked. The city to do, but there was a second part of that, that was A and part of A came with B, which is you had to have a plan. When you declare a state of homelessness, then you start receiving federal funds to back up some type of plan. And we have been watching our city reallocate shuffle and shift millions of dollars. For this navigation center that's supposed to take place somewhere on E Street. Well, there has never been a timeline, there has never been a plan, and now. At. Zero second, they want us to give away. One point three million dollars. To other cities to house homeless in motels. And they wanna spend one point an additional. One point six million dollars to put people in hotels here, how long are they gonna be in these hotels? What is the expected turnaround rate, how much is this costing, I guess we could, let's just look, I'm sorry, before let me get. Cause this is, these are all the things I ask and I think about, let me look at the agenda item on page sixty one because. Oops, this is, that's crazy to me. I mean, this is. Uh 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 almost, you know, four million dollars of money, so, okay, we just read all that. May, okay, alright. Three million, okay, the anticipated cost to operate the interim, okay. The city seeks to implement a motel voucher program to temporarily house homeless individuals and families while providing an array of supportive services to help bridge. Individuals to long-term housing, got it. The anticipated cost to operate the interim shelter for one year, you guys, is three million dollars. Expensive will be covered by the following funding, permanent local housing allocation, community development, block grants, the American Rescue Plan, so. Th- they say there's no fiscal impact to the general fund, we've already been allocating these funds, so out of everything. That we have been trying to prepare for, if you look at the background. This four point five million dollars for the navigation center and all of this coordinating. Nothing. Absolutely zero, the best solution after over a year of declaration by Mayor Tran and the council. Is. Exactly what the county has been doing forever is we're going to give you vouchers to temporarily put you. In a hotel. And then you'll end up right back on the street because it doesn't work, it's a revolving door. I am so disappointed. It it's. It's crazy. Like, and so the shelter bed capacity, the city identified several operation shelter beds within the city. Which is used to determine the number of emergency shelter beds still needed to meet a sixty plus one threshold, okay. This is the best they can do. Is hotel rooms. And how long is the stay, I'm looking, I'm reading you guys to see if it tells you how long, here we go. How long will you be able to stay in these hotel rooms? The city's motel voucher program is designated to assist the unhoused individuals who become displaced due to the city's encampment cleanup efforts. Priorities given to the unhoused residents. Um, the program provide interim shelter during the development and construction process of the city's navigation center, which there is zero timeline for completion. Um, I'm gonna keep scrolling, I'm scrolling. Um. Here we go, eligibility criteria, it's a nighttime, individuals, families who lack regular housing. They're, okay, in. Exiting institution where they have resided ninety days or less in an emergency shelter that's still not. The program is intended to prioritize, hang on guys, I'm sorry, I just wanna, I don't wanna read everything to you, I just wanna try and find how long. Someone is allowed, okay, motel vouchers can be used to individuals or families anywhere from up to one day to twenty eight days. The twenty eight day limit is due to situations when a person has secured some form of housing. But the individual needs a place to stay until their housing unit is ready for moving. So. Hey. Ah. These are, this is. A twenty eight days, one to twenty eight day stay for people, this is not a permanent solution. And here's the real problem, again. Again, what I see you guys is the real problem is this, there's no plan for after the fact. There's no plan to get these people off the streets, there is no timeline, we're in any of this, you approved a temporary patch. On permanent housing solution issues. And at the exceeding cost of three million dollars, over which half of that, you're not even reinvesting into the city. You're giving it to Redlands and Ontario, and you know why you're giving it to Redlands and Ontario? Because you did not even look at the capacity of the city to be able to pull this off. So we are losing money, we're losing one point three million dollars. So, okay, there you go, if that's. And you know what, let me tell you something, I absolutely understand why now Mayor Helen Tran and the council would wanna hide this at five o'clock in the afternoon. After their big old we declared homelessness a state of emergency with zero. Zero provisions to actually pull it off because that is crazy. That is crazy, I want you guys to realize that the city of Redlands. Put a plan together to convert a hotel for I think almost close to the cost of two million dollars. Um, but that was permanent sustainable housing for the homeless in Redlands. So Redlands is going to receive an additional, um, you know, because they have T O T tax, so this isn't gonna go untaxed. But these additional dollars are gonna go somewhere else. I don't, I don't get it, I don't get it, so if you wanna talk about the the failure of the animal shelter and the failure of giving away. Almost a ha- a million and a half dollars for hotel rooms. For up to, after twenty eight days, these people get to come back, are gonna be right back on the streets. And it didn't say how many times that they get to go in and out of the hotel. Okay, we're gonna move on, so after that, then they're going to adjourn. And they're gonna come back at six o'clock. And they're gonna talk about items two, three through twenty two, so here's the thing, this is again. This was all the regular meeting. This was the regular meeting, supposed to be at seven o'clock and they moved it up. Mayor Helen Tran proposed moving the meetings up. Months ago because she doesn't like to be at the meetings late, apparently she never watched a meeting, well, she didn't, she never attended a meeting. Nor did she even watch one for years until she became mayor, so being there at ten eleven o'clock at night just isn't her gig. Now. They've come up with a way. To start showing up at this at this point at six o'clock, when most people are just getting off work. So you can come to this meeting at six o'clock and you cannot talk about the first two items, you have to talk about everything else right now on. On this, so. They're going to look at the Maddie Act local uh appointments list, so if you become a commissioner or if you, you know, this is basically. Um, where everybody stands in their. Their placements on the commissions. Uh, approve a professional service agreement with JEA and Associates and Capital Edge Advocacy for state and federal legislative advocacy ser- advocate. Advocacy services, so this is. You know, another close to hundred and eighty thousand dollar contract, so these are our our lobbyists that we send out, I haven't, you know. This is what we pay for, um, in addition to the mayor's salary. Proposed twenty four uh mayor and city council regular meeting schedules, so this is where they'll go through, tell you what meetings they're not gonna come to. Resolution declaring intent to annex territory community facilities through district. Yeah, off of Mill Street, so if you live in this area, um, you know, we've talked a lot about community facility districts, they're going to try and bring one in. They're going to try and bring another one in in Verdumont Ranch in Ward Five, so this is a special tax for annexation into the community facilities district. Here again, um, that puts an additional burden on the community, we know that and our resources. So professional service agreement with Michael Baker International for grant administrative services in the amount of two hundred and forty three thousand dollars, so let's see. Authorize the city manager doesn't need to execute a professional service agreement commencing tomorrow and ending in two years with Michael Baker International. In the amount of two hundred and forty three thousand dollars for grant administrative consultant services. So we're gonna take a look at that on page five nineteen. Okay. It's recommended that the mayor and city manager authorize this four hundred and forty three thousand contract. A professional service agreement is proposed with Michael Baker to provide grant management services for two years. This agreement is being recommended to provide the housing division with staff assistance and training in the administration of various housing departments and urban development grant programs. The housing division is currently in expansion mode and is bringing on new staff who need specific training to HUD and operations programs. MBI has the experience and resources in staff management aspects training. To assist new staff members over the next two years, there is no impact on the general fund at the cost of services will be paid through grant programs administrative funds. So here's my deal. Here we are, is there no one in the city that can do this job as we are expanding and hiring? Is there nobody in the housing division that we wouldn't preemptively know could do grant management? That we have to go and give an outside contractor two hundred and forty three thousand dollars? And why can't you just train somebody within a year, why do we need you for two years? Why can't we reevaluate where staff is? In one year, so, uh, it's for those of you that saw that, yeah, that's that's very interesting, so. Maybe the council will pull that. The city manager's office staffing and side later letter agreement, yes, you guys, can you believe that this is actually just something they wanted to throw into the consent calendar? We're gonna go to page five forty four. Here we go. Suzie Sorin, Director of Human Resources, someone you guys that we gotta watch out for, I kid you not. Um, you wanna talk about the debacle with the with this whole city manager issue, like. You know our our issues with human resources alone in this city, so it's recommended that the mayor and city council of San Bernardino adopt a resolution twenty three dash one seven nine. Adding two deputy city manager positions to the city manager's office. Authorizing the city manager to execute a side letter agreement with the executive employees to include deputy C and city manager classification. Amending the citywide salary. So they want, so remember. What, just a couple months ago? The council denied Charles McNeely an additional assistant city manager, which equates to two deputy city managers, they told him no. Now here they they have hired. A guy who has been fired multiple times from other cities. Who the community does not trust with the position that people do not feel can actually take care of the job. And now he has requested to hire two people. Between fifteen and twenty nineteen thousand dollars a month, so between thirty and additional thirty to forty thousand dollars. A month. In his office. To help him run this city. That's what this is telling us, for almost what? Four hundred and eighty half a million dollars alone. In just the salary of two people, for a guy that we are paying. Three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to, he needs another half a million dollars for people to do his job. One deputy city manager will be assigned to the operations of park, uh, Public Works Parks Recreation and Community Services. And Community Development and Housing, the second deputy city manager will be assigned to the Internal Service Department of Human Resources, Information Technology Finance. What is he gonna be doing? What what is the city manager for three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars going to be doing while these two thirty thousand to forty thousand dollar? Like, what what are we doing? This is, and and plus, don't forget you have the assistant city manager Eddie. Um. That's, I don't, I don't even know, I I, so this is, this is what we get. We have to expend a half a million dollars a year, uh, that's, guys, that's just salary. You're not even talking benefits, so we're talking upwards of an additional million dollars a year for two people? I I don't even know, I just. Again, here's why they moved the meetings up. Like, it, yeah, Scott, a hundred percent, this is what leads people into bankruptcy. Do you know, you can't get your street paved, but this guy that they hired can go spe- expend. You know, upwards of thirty two thousand, at the low end, thirty two thousand dollars a month for two additional people. You can't get your street lights on, you can't get your streets paved, you can't get the homeless off the street for more than twenty eight days. You can't have a clean park, you can't have your sidewalks fixed. You can't get a downtown. But you can, you can hire two additional people. The priorities, the priorities are just. Not with the people, they just really aren't, so. There you go, guys, that's a big one, and that's in the consent calendar, by the way. That is, that is something that doesn't even. Come in front of the people as a discussion. That's a rubber stamp for the council and probably, look, I have no doubt, here's what I'm gonna tell you, my prediction, that Mayor Helen Tran, Teddy Sanchez, Sandra Barra. Juan Figueroa and Fred Charette are going to just. Hand stamp it. Because that's their guy. And they know they hired someone who can't handle the job, so they're gonna have to give him. The additional people to do the job, we are paying other people to run this city and paying a guy three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to do. What, and what are we paying the assistant city manager to do? I don't know. I don't know. So, okay, here we go, item ten. Acceptance of the California State Library Building Forward Library Facilities Improvement Grant, and so this is the good one, we talked about this. Um. This is a great grant coming forward at um to help us improve the Feldheim Library, so this was cool, I I I like this one. Number eleven amendment, the professional service agreement for MP Group, a DBA uh printery in the amount of seventy five thousand dollars to sign. Print and mail preparations of city San Bernardino Parks and Brex Community Service Trimester brochure. As even though that's a little expensive, I'm super in support of these, I don't know if you guys get them, but. I think one of the greatest things that Park and Breck has done has sent us, has been able to send us up like the pamphlets of when the classes are and all the things that are going on, so. No issue with that. Approve uh approval agreement with the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation for the renovation of Blair Park. This is really cool, super appreciative of Councilman Reynoso for, uh, and always Director Gutfield and her team. For bringing this forward along with Yamava, I think. For bringing this forward along with Yamava, I think this is just, uh, really good, we need some, some good investments. Approval of visual performance and literacy art grants, so we're getting twenty-five thousand dollars, that's great. And execute a professional service agreement with the Women's Inspirational Network on iss- and issue a purchase order. So, let's look at that, someone was asking, um. I don't, I don't know what this is, so six twenty-four. Uh, we, so Scott, we used to have a print shop in-house and we got rid of that. Is mine, we used to print everything like that we could inside of the city. And that was something that was done away with when they moved out of City Hall. So I, I know we used to, but I don't think we do anymore. So, let's see, a three hundred thousand dollar agreement. The city was awarded Proposition Sixty-four Grant Funding effective May first to twenty twenty-three through October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Half of the funding is dedicated to youth outreach through community-based nonprofit organizations. The Women's Inspirational Network, WIN, partnered with the Police Department to apply for the grant. And will provide curriculum and staff to administer youth outreach and development efforts. Staff requests the city manager authorized to execute the professional service agreement with WIN. Okay, but you know that rings a bell, and I, for some reason, I feel like I spoke to someone about this. So, okay, that's cool, that's what it is, you guys, it's a part of a, a grant thing. That went through. So, very nice, alright. Fifteen, accept a twenty twenty-three COP C H P grant, so here again, um, we've got. An appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars in both revenue and expenditures in grant funds. And three hundred and three thousand dollars in general fund expenditures and grant matching funds. The Police Department to increase warrant officer. Um, staffing from three hundred and seven to three hundred eleven, so there, you know, the cops are definitely doing their. Um, their work in making sure that they're getting enough funding to expand their officers, so from three oh seven to three eleven. Let's see, um, let me read your comments, sorry. Uh, I'm Larry of the wording giving C M authorization, yeah, I, I am too, I, you know. I, I don't know exactly. What R C M is up to, and so I think there needs to be a lot more oversight. I w- I hope the coun- somebody on the council speaks up and just says, hey. Like, when do we make sure all of this stuff is happening? When do, where's the oversight? Where are the reports back to council? Where's the updates? So I'm with you, Scott, i- this is, this is kind of problematic. Number sixteen, execution of a five-year agreement between the County of San Bernardino and the City of San Bernardino for Police Department access to county radio communications. That will be helpful, but let's see, at the cost, uh, not to exceed two point three million. Dollars over the duration, oh, five years, okay, of the agreement, so, as we guys, as we know, proactive policing. Is, is really important, so. Not an issue there, technical revision of the purchase of cellular site stimulator equipment, so that came up at the last meeting. No, remember, we had that discussion, five-year capital project needs analysis for Measure I. So, this just for me shouldn't be. A consent calendar item, I think this is something as always that the community should discuss. Um, number nineteen, this is really cool, this has been a, a, just a great project. Uh, I believe of, you know, definitely of Councilwoman Calvin, and I think in conjunction with. Councilman, um. Figueroa is improvements in Nicholson Park, so. Um, if you're over in the sixth ward and you're bordering the, on the, on, on the third, this is gonna be a great improvement for you guys. Cuz there really hasn't been any investment. Number twenty, the appointment, uh, appointing an interim director of Public Works. Operations and Maintenance, so this is going to be Lynn Murcell. Uh, Merrill, I'm sorry, let's look at. This, I don't, real quick. So here we go, let's see where they come from. Alright. The city manager reached out to Mister. Merrill due to his high level of knowledge and skills and abilities to perform the jobs to re- uh, for the recruitment. Prior to his retirement. Merrill held the position of Director of Public Service with the City of San Bernardino. Mister Merrill has over forty-five years in the public sector, so this is, again, a former city director. Not in my time at the city, so this must be. Um, quite. A while back. Um, so if anybody remembers him, let me know, cuz I, I don't. I did hear that this was someone that, um, was previously involved in the city, so. There you go, there will be a new interim Public Works Director, there is an interim Community and Economic Development Director. So, okay, this was a- added at the last minute, item twenty-one. Extending the city's deadline to establish an online permitting system for post entitlement. Phase permits in accordance with state law, so here again, here again, you guys, is a big red flag. On calling something a special meeting, because you can re-agendize within twenty-four hours. Alright. Recent legislation through Assembly Bill twenty-two thirty-four. Includes provisions for city to provide an online permitting system for post entitlement permits. Including building permits, demolition and grading permits by January twenty twenty-four. The city's permitting software does provide for online permits and therefore the city. Does provide for online permits and therefore the city cannot implement online services. By the January first deadline, therefore the city is proposing to extend the establishment of the online system. To January twenty twenty-six, am I reading that wrong? The city's permitting software does provide for online permits. And therefore the city cannot implement online services. By the January first deadline, alright, I don't know. Okay, therefore, the city is proposing to extend the establishment of online systems for two years. To qualify for this extension, the city must either have financial constraints or have engaged a consultant to implement an online system. The city has engaged a consultant, client first, to study the city's department and permitting needs. With the next step to solicit proposals for permitting software firms to implement a full-service system. That will include an online permitting component. This effort qualifies the city for the extension, so I'm going to assume. That it, they're saying the city's permitting software does not provide at this time. Instead of does, because that doesn't make sense, so that's what it is, they're asking for a two-year extension. I am a full supporter of, um. Streamlining these processes. But. Um, interesting. Very interesting, so. There was that one. And they took off twenty-two. So Scott, number, um. Twenty-two is clo- or I'm sorry, twenty-two is closed session, so the, the reordering is weird. So after they get out of the regular meeting, they're gonna go into closed session, there are two items. DeShawn M. Wright versus City of San Bernardino and the Conference of Significant Exposure to Two Cases, so. I wanted to make this kind of quick, forty-two minutes, but. Uh, this is truly, I think, where the issues lie. With all the stuff that is going on, um, the, a lot of money, look, here and again. Is we're not having the real conversations with the fact that. They're about to give away over almost a half a million dollars to other cities for temporary shelters. There is no timeline in taking care of the actual issue of homelessness and of being unhoused in our city. They want to extend an agreement to three other cities for animal services when we can't even take care of our own. The city manager that they just hired, and one of the highest salaries in our city. Is now asking for, for two people and almost a half a million dollars a year, plus benefits. To come and pensions, to help him do his job in addition to the assistant city manager. Guys, look. I don't always like to be the bearer of bad news, what I'm telling you is. This is not the way that government is supposed to work, it may not feel like a two-hour difference is significant. But it really is. It really matters, because they knew people weren't gonna know, um. That this stuff is being put into the consent calendar, that no one believes there should be any discussion. On the amount of money we're shifting and moving, again, is, is, is problematic, so, look, if you're tired of this. Type of shenanigans and, and you want a councilperson that calls it out, I mean, just. Right here, but, um, we are so far from, removed from what Val Devia did. Because we're still dealing with it, and you just replace the names, you know, just swap out the, the names on the door. Because the practices are still the same, so, thank you guys for watching, if you have any questions, put them in your, um, in the chats. And then I will also post this to Instagram as well as Nextdoor. And I hope you guys have a great rest of your week, if you go to the meeting tomorrow. Um, let them know what you think. Alright, goodnight, San Bernardino.